There, will you do the roll call, please?
Amy Gokenhour.
Here.
Linda Barnhart.
Present.
Erica.
Here.
Icana Norton.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant.
Here.
Nick Deal.
Eric Smith.
Okay, thank you, we have a quorum. We have the agenda which has been sent to you earlier. I can have a motion to approve as submitted. Sorry?
Submove.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Goff, second of Mr. Gant, to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is our open governmental process. This is known as the Sunshine Law. If you have questions or comments regarding something that might be on your mind, other than a project that's on for public hearing, please come forward and state your name, address, and any questions you might have of this body. Can you hear now? Much better? Okay. Let the record show that there's no one here to speak regarding the open governmental process. The next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. Those have also been sent to you. Had an opportunity to review them. Need a motion to approve or...
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to approve, second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved.
Abstained due to absence.
Okay, there is one abstention by Mr. Gant due to absence.
I also abstained.
And one abstention by Ms. Norton due to absence. The motion passed. Next item will begin our public hearings, and the first item on the agenda is Cardinal Point.
Yes, so the first public hearing tonight is a request for final plat approval. The project is Cardinal Point, Section 2, Phase 1, Lots 432 through 479, 504 through 515, and 588 through 599, File 2013-089. The developers Panhandle Homes and the engineers Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 9, Parcel 11, and is located on the north side of Hammond's Mill Road, west of St. Andrews Drive. This phase proposes 72 townhome lots on 14.95 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of the surety in the amount of $1,660,468.80. Plat to be released upon receipt of that surety.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Smith joined the meeting. Thank you. Who do we have here to represent the project?
Good evening, Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you. All right, again, this is a public hearing. If you have questions or comments regarding this project, please come forward, state your name, and any comments you might have. I would ask if there's a lot of people here to speak to this project, that you do not repeat the same concerns over and over because once they're noted, they're noted in our record.
Yes, my name is Andrew Zetsz, and I'm the owner of Zetsz Fish Cafes, Zetsz Fish Bar and Fish Cafes. And of course, I'll be the most affected by this project.
That's not the project that you're here for. We're here for Cardinal Point, which is in Falling Waters District.
I can't give any objection.
This is down off of Hammond's Mill Road. The project you're talking about is across from you, but this is not the project that's being referenced right now.
You can speak when the project comes up that affects you.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Go ahead of yourself, that's okay.
No problem, no problem. We'll be happy to listen to you whenever the project is presented. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding Cardinal Point?
If not, the public hearing is closed.
Second.
Let the record show that there's no comments. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to close the public hearing on Cardinal Point. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or of the staff regarding Cardinal Point?
There are no questions. I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation. Final plat approved, contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $1,660,468.80.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokenhour to approve the project for final plat, pending receipt of surety in the amount of $1,660,468.80. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Planning Commission.
The next project for public hearing is Overlook at Riverside.
This public hearing is a request for major plan change approval. The project is Overlook at Riverside, File 2102-357. The developers, Rotts Family Limited Partnership, and the engineers Frederick Seibert and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Map 7, Parcel 160.3, and is located a quarter mile east of the intersection of Williamsport Pike and Corporate Drive. This plan change proposes an increase in the number of lots south of Charterhouse Street from 251 to 288, so that's 35 single-family detached are being changed into 72 single-family attached, so townhomes. This area is approximately 17 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. On April 2nd, 2018, the Planning Commission granted the developer the following deviations for a planned unit development. Direct access to a boulevard will not be permitted. The sidewalk is to be placed on the north side of the boulevard. The developer must plant fast-growing trees as a buffer between Brookfield and Overlook at Riverside. And on September 16th, 2019, the Planning Commission granted the developer a waiver to Article 8, Section 801, Table 8-1A, reducing the required parking for multifamily dwellings with a minimum of 1.86 spaces per unit being provided. That was for the apartments. County engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of completion on June 2nd, 2021, and stated that the major plan change meets the requirements for approval. The major plan change meets all the requirements for the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the major plan change.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Frederick Seibert, Associates.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Recognize some faces that was here a couple of weeks ago. You had a lot of questions, and I think you were maybe told that you would hear some answers to these questions that you had, so if you want to voice them, again, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your questions you might have.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Wren. I live at 40 Stager Avenue, Falling Waters. I'm speaking today regarding the proposed major plan change number one for Overlook at Riverside. As you can see from the site comparison table, which is on Page 2, this proposal will drastically change the overall makeup of this development. My family and I have chosen to make a vote. Instead of a blended community of single-family homes and townhomes, it is being proposed to change this into primarily a townhome community with a much smaller percentage of single-family homes. Specifically, a mere 34.3% of the homes would be single-family dwellments per this proposal. In addition, the number of lots, I'm sorry, the proposed changes include expanding the overall number of lots by 37 units, which amounts to a 15% increase. Along with these increases to the community's lot capacity, the size of the proposed common area amenities would be decreased while creating a 42-space parking lot which puts right up against it. From my perspective, the addition of this parking lot directly adjacent to the common area effectively advertises it as an open-to-the-public or outside-community member space rather than a resource for residents of the community. If every lot is offered a garage and driveway, why is a parking lot of that size being awkward and taking away space for additional amenities? Even a field of grass would be more appealing and probably cheap. For these reasons, I strenuously object to the approval of this major plan change. The much higher concentration of townhomes increases the density of the community, while their lower value and price point will reduce the average overall inherent value of all lots in the community by approximately $16,000. Look, I get it. This looks like a good deal for both the developer and Dan Ryan Builders. Less building materials, more lots. This is also a good deal for the homeowners association. At the prevailing fee rates, these changes would amount to an annual increase of over $36,000. But for my family and I, nothing in this plan change appears to be a positive. More lots, more people, another parking lot, a smaller common area, and a lower inherent property value, not what we signed up for. While I appreciate the chance to speak, I didn't want to come out here tonight. It's taking away time spent with my family. If I didn't feel strongly about how these changes would negatively affect us, I would abstain. Rest assured, I will take advantage of any and all opportunities to make these points and oppose this major plan change. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. You may want to pull the microphone down so people...
I am also kind of loud.
That's okay.
All right, so hi, my name's Adrian Wren. I'm a resident of, also live in 40 Stager, in the Overlook community. I'm also here to object to major plan change number one. Want to highlight property value. Now, property value is assessed by personal property in addition to neighboring property. Townhomes are publicly known to have slower appreciation and cost less than single-family homes. That was originally proposed and affects all the current residents. Simply said, larger, more expensive homes equal higher property value and vice versa. So, the phrase "you're only as strong as your weakest link" would come to play, and I did not willingly put my savings into a home to be valued less over time. That's just poor investment, which brings me to my next concern. Webster's Dictionary defines the term bait-and-switch as "the ploy of offering a person something desirable gained favor than thwarting expectation for something less desirable." That definition seems to be hitting a little too close to home. Bait-and-switch is known as a form of fraud, deception, and sometimes illegal. Now, I am safe to believe that Mr. Rotts, Robert Rotts of the Rotts Family, he probably did have all his protections in place to make these changes, but one thing that is a vital asset that cannot be protected is your reputational risk. For those who are not familiar with this term, I do invite you to researches as I categorize reputational risk as a living, and every day I can see the downfalls and side effects of poor business decisions throughout associations. Benjamin Franklin's quote, "One rotten apple spoils his companion," comes to mind here. Now, I live directly across from the model homes, and whenever I first moved in, I watched this community thrive with many interested parties that came into the community. Then, like the Baltimore Colts, Dan Ryan Builders just slipped out of town, leaving no in-person representation or online presence. Since then, I see people come in all the time. What do I tell them? Because they come to me? I'm a neighbor? I don't know, because there was silence from the developer and silence from the HOA, and we had been left in the dark. So, at this point in time, immediate speculations did occur, thus starting the negative reputational risk. As I look throughout this room, I see a lot of familiar faces within my community, and I want to thank you all for the time you let us voice our opinions.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Clark. I'm also a resident of Overlook at 161 Charterhouse Street in Falling Waters. I'm here today because I am one of the townhome owners. I think the two folks that have spoken to you before is homeowners. I am downsizing from Washington County from a large home to a townhome, working towards retirement to the south. So, I'm not opposed to being in townhomes. I think they do add some values for up-and-coming families and getting new people to your county and what your county and your beautiful state has to offer, which is why I came this direction. Kittysville, which I love and have been for 16 years, started getting very overcrowded very quickly, and I came here, and I just keep moving until I'm finally getting to retirement. What I see as the biggest concern here is just the lack of communication. As my neighbor stated, we just don't have any guidance, and even when we reached out to our homeowners association, they did not have any information for us, so we just feel like we're sitting underneath this cloud right now. So, what I would like to propose is that, you know, somewhere down the line that the developer and the homeowners association and whoever ends up being the next developer in our community, which we still have no clue who that is, and one or two people from our community be made as some type of board to keep these communications flowing. My biggest concern is I am on Charterhouse, so it is, I am being bombarded by explosions to the left, to the front, and now they're building the apartments directly behind me. I watch them every day. So, I get all three sides of me, and I see the development going, and what I see now is the apartments are going up, and they are going up very, very, very quickly, and nothing is going on in our community, which means our community is now six to nine months further down from its completion date because there is no one selling homes in our development right now, which is greatly affecting anybody's property value right now when they come up to a model home that has been shuttered for six to eight months, and that's where we're at right now. I just would like there to be some open communication, and my biggest concern, again, because I am a town homeowner, is that loss of community area, open area, because, again, our lots are extremely small, and we were looking forward to that area, and we would like that area to be reconsidered as part of a future plan change with the community involved in developing that open area against this parking lot for better usage than what they're currently planning on, and so we would actually like to be part of conversations if you guys were to table this, to be part of that communications about that next phase and that open community lot area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, David Valente, 144 Stager Avenue. My main concern is the increase in the number of lots that are going to be in the neighborhood, plus the large parking lot that's going to be in the neighborhood constitutes a public safety issue for the neighborhood, and the sheer number of people that'll be coming up into the neighborhood, the new people that'll be living in the neighborhood will provide, will be an issue for public safety, for kids. If they're in townhome lots, you're going to have two, three cars, you could have cars in the streets, and, you know, children playing in the streets, and without a substantial amenity area, they're going to be playing in the streets. So, I think that we should table this and discuss it further and have a much better public amenities area for our community.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Steven Thompson, 159 Stager Avenue. I do just want to make the one comment because of where the townhouses are going to be in relation to Stager. Now, I happen to have a small common area behind my house, which would be backside facing the backside of townhouses, should they be built. That common area is sloped, so the top of that common area is slightly higher than my ceiling level, so I'm now looking at potentially a three-story building on top of that grave looming over my house and over all the houses on that area. There's not a whole lot of separation, so all these nice little single-family homes, and suddenly behind them on a rise, it does slope towards the one end and get over, but on a rise, really tall buildings, really wide buildings. That bothers me in that I signed up for an area based on a plan that I was shown. This is what the area is going to look like. You're going to move in here, you're going to have the amenities of this size here, you're going to have single-family homes behind you. Maybe I get a two-story, but not, no three-story. Maybe I'd like to get a rancher, but still, it's changing the character of the community. It's adding to the traffic, and yes, there's a lot of kids playing in the street now because we don't have any idea what those amenities will ever happen, because it seems like that they, who knows? They might decide to take another plan change and take them away entirely. I don't know, but I'm very concerned just with that. Huge tall buildings behind all the single-family homes we have. I've talked to other neighbors who are not here tonight, and nobody's liked the idea. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nicholas Lanahan, 137 Stager Avenue. I live a few houses down from Steve. Same thing, we uproot our family from Baltimore. Came here when we were looking at the development. We loved it. We loved the map, the layout. Yeah, we knew there was going to be a single-family home right behind ours, but now there's going to be a row, rows and rows of townhomes. I have three small children. They all play in the street. Cars are zipping down now. With the added townhomes, there's only one way in, towards our house, or you could go up another side street. We're just concerned as well about the cars coming in and out with my kids playing, and it's just changing the plan on us. As soon as we bought our house, paid for it, and now all of a sudden they're changing the map to these townhomes, we're not happy as well. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak under the public hearing?
Forgive me, I'm not good at public speaking, but my husband and I live at 80 Stager.
Want to state your name for the record?
Audrey Persha.
Okay.
And we agreed with all of our neighbors. We had been sold into something that was not followed through on, and we don't appreciate it, just to put it lightly, but I can agree, it's not what we signed up for, and it's not what we were promised, it's not what we were sold, and we definitely are not happy about the extra homes that are there planning on hiring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak before we close?
Good evening. I'm Melissa Miller from 90 Stager Avenue. I've been the longest family owner, first one that ever moved in. I was looking forward to the amenities already. I have asked some guys in there that actually work there. I have a communication with them. They look at the blueprint, what they have been told, they address it to me, or let me know what is going on. I have also talked to Mr. Rotts, which is a very nice guy, don't get me wrong, but the changes that they're making to the community, nobody's happy. Everyone, you know, that I talk to complains to me, you know, or we address everything with each other. But the dog part, I don't want any more seating area. I don't want a parking lot. Now, I was excited about the tennis courts that they now want to take out and make it a seating area. Tennis courts would give something for the adults to do actually too in the community, not just a playground for the children, and that's my concern. I paid two HOA fees, which I was already, which I thought was part of the amenities too, and I haven't seen anything since I've moved in. Thank you very much.
Okay.
To mention that second date HOA payment, we all have to pay $500 upfront every month towards those amenities, so I've paid that already as every other resident.
Additional comments from the public regarding Overlook?
Aaron, I'll make the motion to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no additional comments. Most of them, Mr. Gant, to close public hearing, second by Mr. Goff.
Jen standing south.
All those in favor? Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Seibert or of the staff?
I do. It was suggested our last time that this project was before us, or not this particular project, but in general, that you all reach out to that community, just so everybody understood what was going on. Did that happen?
We let the...
Do you want to identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, Rob Rotts, the developer. We did let the management company know to the best of our ability what was going on, and they do that communication with residents. So, we have satisfied...
We can contact, but we're all here, and none of us are naked.
Just a minute.
Go ahead.
I'll give my family an hour and thirty to go.
Please, if you want to speak, you need to come forward and speak. Outbursts are not going to be allowed.
As far as the amenities, is that going to happen in this next phase of development?
Yes.
I mean, I...
Wait. At this point, we can't build the amenities because the amenities are encompassed in this major plan change. So, if we want to build the amenities, we don't have the ability to do so until this major plan change is approved. The roads, the sewer connections, there's a lot of things to change about that road, so we can't build them.
And the grading and all that. I understand, I'm just trying to, you know, speak about it so they understand.
To my knowledge, the amenity area did not change, not one bit, as far as its size or its scope. We're not proposing any changes. The parking area, Trevor can speak to that, but the parking area had to be added because of the additional townhomes to meet your requirement. We felt that the parking area would be a benefit to the amenity area, because now people can just drive there and park right at the amenity area rather than not having parking at the amenity area.
Well, if you have big get-togethers and stuff, instead of people parking in the street, they have overflow parking, that's what it's designed for.
I mean, we'd be delighted to eliminate the parking.
Let's save you money.
It's a cost to us, so we certainly were going out of our way to try to put that parking in there.
Right.
We have a note here that the county engineer has issued a letter of completion, and the county engineer is here. Do you wish to speak, Mr. Smith?
Well, I don't know what to, we've reviewed certain areas. I just...
Okay.
As far as we're concerned, the parking lot, we did push during the review process for that parking a little bit harder than normal because we didn't want vehicles parking in the street.
You mean parking for the amenity area?
And both the townhouses as well.
Okay.
Typically, what we're seeing, which we've had these conversations for the evenings here, is we're really concerned about the amount of vehicles parking in the street and the emergency vehicles not having proper access. I mean, I think Rob and Trevor could say, but I kind of push for that rather hard.
I don't know if any of the other planning commission members have questions, but Mr. Rotts, you said that you reached out to a management company, and they were to contact the homeowners, but I heard a lot of, no, that didn't happen.
Well, I'm happy to talk to any of them individually when we leave here or at any other time. Driving through the subdivision, if you see, feel free to come up, I'd be happy to talk to you. We're not trying to keep anything in the dark. A lot of the communication that the residents get is through the builder, and because the builder has pushed the pause button right now, they're not getting that communication. So, that's why they feel like they're out there in the dark. And I generally don't have a forum to communicate with them, but I'd be happy to get their input on the amenity area. I mean, we're planning to build it as it's shown. If a number of the people in the community wanted to make some alterations, we'd be open to that, certainly. We can't make, I mean, obviously, we're not going to add a swimming pool or something that's out of the realm of possibility at this point, but any... But any modest changes, but what we're proposing on this plan is identical to what we had originally proposed. The reason for the additional townhouses is because affordable housing is almost a crisis right now because of the building cost, and they've skyrocketed. So I'm looking at this plan, and I'm seeing I have fewer singles than I have towns, and the towns are selling much more rapidly. So you see that there's an imbalance here, and you say an incremental adjustment is necessary to keep up with the market demands. So that's the reason for the change. I'll also point out that originally, this plan was approved for like 480 lots for the same geographical area. We scaled it back to like 250 some. Now we're 280 some. The traffic and all those impacts are negligible. I mean, we sent it to State Highway. State Highway didn't want us to update our traffic study or anything like that because it's an incremental change in the grand scheme of things.
Well, as far as the homeowners association, it won't get turned over to them until you have 75% of build-out completed. So once it gets to 75% of build-out, and then they'll have to get, you know, form their own board and all that, and then...
Sure. And in terms of the fees, if people have been paying fees, and where are these fees going? The fees go into a bank account that is controlled by the management company. I don't see that money. I don't touch that money. That money is accumulated in that account for your benefit. It has nothing to do with me. I don't, it doesn't pass through me in any way. So it... I mean, I would be concerned too, if you're paying these fees, wait, these are for amenities that don't exist. Now, at this point, I mean, the amenities, I've not made any claims on when they're going to be constructed. I don't have an agreement with the county or with the residents on when they'll be constructed, but my intention is to construct them as soon as possible. Because you get a benefit as the developer, why wait till the end to build the amenities? You don't get any marketing capability out of that. If you build them on the front end, people can see what you have, and it attracts more people to the subdivision. So we're on the same page there. I really would like to construct those amenities as soon as possible.
But you need to get this...
We have to get it approved before they can be constructed.
Can I ask Mr. Rods a question, please?
Well, we've closed the public hearing. Could you take care of those questions if it's directly to Mr. Rods? Would you like to take care of that at the close of the meeting? Would that be all right with you?
Yes, I would. It would be something that, for you all, like if you all approved it, what Mr. Rods is asking for? If it's going to cause more traffic, I talked to you before because of the people's speed, could you put a speed limit sign or speed humps or something? If you all would have approved this, and there would be more traffic into the community, if that could be part of, if you all approved it?
You bet.
That may be something that the...
Happy to do that.
Yeah, that may be something that the engineer would want to address right now.
Yes.
You want to get...
Payment markings, all that was...
So they can hear you.
Traffic signage, pavement markings, street signs, all that traffic control was already included in the major plan change and wasn't approved. DOH did look at the traffic. DOH did not ask for an updated traffic study. They felt that everything was fine. Internally, the change in the homes, the traffic amount changed from what was originally proposed on the original plan to the major plan change, the amount of traffic increases to minimal. It's so spread out through the development, you probably won't notice it.
Right. Right now, we have base pavement down, so we haven't finished this. You know, we can add speed bumps and signs and some other things as we continue, and happy to do that.
Please, Lord, I did want to let you know that I did speak with the HOA. Mr. Rods is correct that he, they had a two-hour conversation. They did have, Brad and Green had a two-hour conversation.
Things work out.
So that did happen. Mr. Rods, all I did ask is, who of the four, do you know, since we don't have a vote between who now oversees that property management company? Because we don't have any votes in it. You said we don't have any votes in it, so they just have a free for all for a little stuff?
The management company at the, you need a certain percentage of the residents in the neighborhood. But then they will be paying certain residents on board, sit on the board of the homeowners.
And I'm glad, because you guys hired the property manager, they're blind, so they have...
I did hire the property manager.
Okay, then go reach out to him to talk about them not doing their job, because we do not receive payments, as I know as an Eagle, as a Canadian Maryland. We've been there for a year and have never received any help from them.
Okay, let's...
Happy to hear that, and we can...
I just wanted to make sure how we do the property.
When we leave, I can give you my number and happy to discuss that.
Perfect. And I did want to let you know that I think you're like...
Okay, thank you. All right. Planning Commission members, do you have additional questions or comments? Thank you for coming, Mr. Deal. Let the record show, Mr. Deal joined us.
Sorry, I was late.
About 7:15 or something like that, wasn't it?
Six oh five.
Six oh five. I'm sorry, it didn't 7:15 yet. Can't see the clock, there's a glare on it.
It's like six twenty-five.
There are no further questions from the planning commission members. I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation, the major plan change meets the requirements of subdivision ordinance, therefore recommend approval of the major plan change.
Have a motion by Mr. Gant?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor? Opposed? Let's have a show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. The plan change has been approved.
Thank you very much.
And I would encourage all you people, thank you very much for coming this evening. Thank you for coming last meeting. Appreciate your patience and your cooperation with this board. If you have questions, Mr. Rods, he certainly has offered to answer those at a one-on-one basis or perhaps jointly.
Outside, and we'll be away from this meeting so we don't distract you all.
Thank you very much, yeah. It does get a little loud out there in the hallway from time to time.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda for public hearing is Lord Fairfax Estates.
Yes, so this is another one.
Wait a minute, let's just give a, yeah, let's just give a second for those who want to exit to...
Take a break.
Someone back there want to close the door so that any conversations are... Thank you so much. Okay, let's resume with our public hearing, Lord Fairfax Estates.
Yes, this is another public hearing for a request for major plan change approval. The project is Lord Fairfax Estates, lots six through 20, file 2008-200. The developer is Swan Pond Land Trust, and the engineer is Kimberly Petrucci PE. It's located in the Peckin District, map 12, part of parcel 26.10, and is located approximately two miles from Shepherdstown Road off of Swan Pond Road. This plan change proposes 15 single-family lots on approximately 51 acres to be served by private well and septic. And also, this plan change is bringing the project into compliance with the 2016 stormwater ordinance. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. County engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of completion on June 8th, 2021, and stated that the major plan change meets the requirements for approval. The major plan change meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the major plan change.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here to represent the project?
Good evening. Mike Roberts, you're representing the project.
Okay, have you just recently come on board? Because it says Kim Petrucci.
I'm doing the final class.
Okay.
On the project.
All right, okay. Well, he's copied and loaded, but it's not on the project. Okay, this is a public hearing for Lord Fairfax Estates. If you have questions or comments, please come forward and make those comments known.
If there's nobody, I'll move to close public hearing.
Second.
Let the record show that there's no comments from the public regarding Lord Fairfax Estates. Have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or of the staff?
Just to the record, there are only eight lots. So this application continues.
Well, I went off the application for the staff report.
Sorry?
I would have went off the application for the staff report. So I can edit the staff report in a minute for the record.
You say there's only eight?
Yeah, in your package, you have, actually, a couple.
Oh, okay.
It shows eight.
I feel we need confusion.
Three, four, five, six, eight.
I'll change my paperwork, so...
Okay, planning commission members, do you have additional questions or comments of Mr. Roberts or of the staff now that we know that the plan change is for eight lots rather than 15?
There are none. I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation, approve the major plan change.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenhour, to accept staff recommendation and add as to approve the major plan change for Lord Fairfax Estates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
The next public hearing is a request for consideration. The project is Waterford Glen. The file is 2106-208 tied to 133-05. The developer is CBC Properties, Inc., and the engineer is Clark Azar and Associates. Located in the Mill Creek District, map six, parcel 54.4, and is located on Fish Hatchery Road, one mile southeast of Route 11. This project proposes 181 single-family lots, 74 townhomes, and 34 duplex lots on approximately 110 acres. A storm drain waiver for this project was reviewed and approved by the county engineer on December 2nd, 2016. The developer is now requesting the project's preliminary plan approval to be extended one year to June 18th, 2022, or until the approval of its first final plat, whichever comes first. County engineer Doug Smith recommends granting the requested extension, and staff concurs with county engineer and recommends granting the request to extend the plan approval for one year to June 18th, 2022, or until the approval of its first final plat, whichever comes first.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Lynch Christian, I'm representing the applicant.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for Waterford Glen. If you have questions or comments, please come forward, state your name and your address, and any questions you might have regarding this project.
There you go.
You're anxious.
Andrew Zets, Zets Fish Farm, Fish Hatchery at Inwood, West Virginia. And my address is Field Lot 5, 878 Hatchery Road, Inwood. I'd like to start off, you know, that we operate one of the largest fish hatcheries in the state of West Virginia, and actually, the eastern largest warm water fish hatchery eastern seaboard. And we raise and ship millions and millions of fish yearly. And it's a family business. My whole family, you know, are involved in it and make a living from it. We can't learn our fish and ship and deliver them nationwide. And at one time, before 9/11, I shipped them out of the country, but that was that old. And I don't think, no one understands. I don't think the developer understands, and I'd like you all to understand what is going on. The property is a, you know, it's 100 acre property. It's draining into my fish hatchery. And I had a biologist here at the last meeting, you know, stayed and found the fish. First thing, you need water, which I'm not going to have. And the next thing, you need pure water. You know, I don't need water, antifreeze, it's all draining into my place. And we need, it just, nobody understands, it's a big bowl type area, and there's, the last thing, they have pitchers open and everything, but... Anyways, we have almost 100 ponds, and good-sized ponds, a quarter of acre up to, bringing out acres. And then we have 65 tanks, and they're all feeding from this water system that's going to be in our fish hatchery. And I was just talking to an engineer, I delivered fish in Maryland, and he said, "My gosh, you say, you mean to tell you that they didn't let me develop right on top of your fish hatchery?" The planning commission, and I says, "Yeah," I said, "they're just planning on developing and destroying it." And I just want to stay in business. I've been there for 42 years. You know, I hadn't made this business, and it's a very successful business. It's an asset to the community. I draw, you know, customers from all over the place, bringing their revenue into the place, pay taxes and employ people. And I'm just, I'm going to be put out of business. And it's going to be destroyed. I was just looking at it the other day, I was looking through my phone, and I'm looking off like this, you know? And all these townhouses, everything in the watershed, the federal fish hatcheries, you got to be at least 1,000 feet away from a fish hatchery to build a house. Has to be so far away. Because, you know, they recognize, well, you got that pure water fish. And it's going to put us out of business. It's going to be a huge loss to me, to my family, to everybody. And I don't think we want to, you know, destroy something like that. I, yeah, I just don't think 289 pound houses or duplexes on top of my watersheds is going to do me any good. And there's no, there's no planning for the water. The engineer didn't find nothing for the water. There's no green space to put out. There's nothing better than green space for pollution control. There's no green space whatsoever. I went to the DPP, and they bought me something terrible for 50 feet. You know, it's been a lot of money and everything, and, you know, I got the 50 feet. I mean, it was just, back, 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 you know? And 50 feet, I mean, it's nothing. I mean, anyplace else, anybody knows, any kind of engineer, especially for the county, you would know that, you know, that you have to have green space. You have to have acreage, you know? The only thing that will really suck up those pollutants is education and water and shallow ponds. There's nothing in the planning, nothing. It isn't even salt near nothing, they just push it through, and just keep pushing it and pushing it. And I can see it's a lot of money, you know, it's a lot of money for the county, it's a lot of money for everybody, but it's just, it's detrimental to my family. My family knows, I mean, he started me out, four or two years ago. Loaned me the money from the bank. And I worked hard to build that business up, and now it's going to be destroyed. I hope they really help me out. I don't think it should be tabled, but I think it should be done with, I think it should be, you know, completely redone. There needs to be maybe 20 houses in there, and some green space, and they just have to swallow, you know? Sometimes you buy something and you lose on it. And that's basically what they got here. You have some doubt, like, and, I don't know. I'm just talking from the top of my head, you know? I let somebody look at it. But I hope that you have a plan of course to help get this, I hope you're all, you know? Because it's going to be, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to hold a, or get tired of it. time here. There's some hard construction to fix, you know, to help us out. And sometimes, I'm not against developing, developing is great. I like to see development. I also operate fishing lakes, which I've made fishing lakes, you know, if people come in, fish, and they ate fish, and they are very, everybody's very satisfied with our business, and we've made a huge success. And now my kids and everything, they're just looking elsewhere, knowing grandkids, that they are going to be out of business, that's all I know. They're going to be out of business.
Thank you, Mr. Zets. Are there additional questions or comments from the public regarding Waterford Glen?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I don't think we're done. Are there additional questions or comments regarding this project, Waterford Glen?
Yeah, speaking, speaking to the microphone, please, so that we can be heard. Your name again? Thomas Henry Jr.
Okay.
With all these houses and everything they want to put up, it's going to be extra traffic in the schools and everyone else. I've had problems with these people ever since this thing started. They hopped my fence, trespassed it on my ground, and staked off where they go for the sewer. I've got pictures of everything. As far as I'm concerned, that's a federal offense, nothing is trespassing on my grounds. I had another man about a year ago come on my ground and wanted to do the same thing. Him and I had it out, I got a lawyer. Lawyer told me, stay waiting, man, man wasn't up in trouble. I'm not going to have him in trouble this time. I'm starting a phone line. If they want to put these houses in, I don't care if they can put 100 pump stations in, that's what they're going to have to do. I'm not going to put this anymore.
Do you have trespassing signs up on your property?
No, I got a fence, and a fence is the same thing as having a trespassing sign up there. You can't come on my property now that you tell me you want to come on there to do something. I open the gate and let you come in. You ain't got the right to jump over my fence and stake my property off and say, "This is where the sewer's going to go." No, ma'am, you don't do that. I got pictures of it. I've kept it. And I've had problems with these people ever since. Ain't going to happen tonight.
Okay. That's that?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments regarding public hearing for Waterford Glen?
Make the motion to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there is no, no additional comments from the public. Motion of Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Gokunhour to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed for Waterford Glen. Okay, Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Christian or of the staff regarding this project?
I can't, I can't tell from the drawing you, but how far from Zets is this? Is it like the property, right next to it?
It is. It's, it's the adjacent fault. And if I could just start off by saying, you know, we have the on the list of stacks for Mr. Zets and the fish farm that he's drawn successfully in Beverly County for a number of years. And we dealt with him cordially. I think many of you, Commissioner Barnhart, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Goff, I think, were on the planning commission when this project was last approved through a major planning change, which brought all of its stormwater management up to the nearest regulations. It has a current valid NBDES permit under the new state's permit in 2020. And I think it's important to note that we did hear from Mr. Zets' fish biologist at the environmental quality board, which is basically the judicial branch of sorts of the West Virginia DEP. And the West Virginia DEP chose to uphold the permit upon a couple of conditions, which we met. And that's how we got our permit issued in the first place. In a sense, we applied under the new permit, and been granted the same thing with the same conditions that it had previously. As for Mr. Henry's concerns, I'm not familiar with them. Somebody jumping his fence and staking something out could have been the Beverly County Sewer District. I don't think, I don't think we've ever met personally. And so I'm just not familiar with his issues. But I can ensure him that, you know, it would not have been the developer who was there. Other than that, I think, you know, the, the planning commission and the engineering department have recommended approval. We meet all the requirements of both the 2009 ordinance, 2016 stormwater, and West Virginia DEP's newest state permit, which I'd like to create the distinction between other projects that you've heard from, request for considerations before. These were projects that were dormant for several, several, several years, probably in many cases, pre-last housing struggle. And a lot of those did not have, meet the restrictions of the 2009 subdivision laws, nor current stormwater. You know, we have been through this process. We have, you know, dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and developed a plan which provides for those treatment and quality control of the water. There's far more than a, than a 50-foot vegetated buffer for the intermittent stream that runs on the Waterford Glen property than Mr. Zets was referencing. You know, we have current stormwater management regulations up there. And I'm open to any other additional questions. But we are the adjacent property, we always have been. And, you know, this, this project has gone through this process. It was scrutinized by three county engineers. You know, it was scrutinized by Dirk and by others. It was scrutinized by even the planning commission forever. And I don't know how many more sets of eyes could be put on it to continue the statement that it is a good plan. It meets all the requirements, and even above and beyond in many cases. And therefore, you know, I have to lobby hard for this consideration to be granted and for us to process this first final plat, which we already have submitted, so.
I, I think, just let me state for the audience and the record that this project was started quite a while ago. And the longer projects go, the more scrutiny they get. And that sometimes is fortunate, sometimes it's unfortunate. The thing that kind of worries me a little bit is all the permits that have been granted are, 17 is the most recent permit. And I'm assuming that at some point, and I talked to Heather about this today, that updated permits will be resubmitted?
If required by the state or federal agency. I've sent a recent 2020 date to Heather for the NBDES, as I, as I was saying, the state permit expired, and they required everybody to get new West Virginia NBDES, which we have.
Okay.
And proof has been provided, and a copy of that has been provided to the planning commission. For the others, it will be on an as-needed basis. We have, we have stayed in contact with the DOH, you know, we've stayed in contact with, with all other agencies that we have approval for, and so far, they've requested no changes, much like they, they did to Mr. Roberts. You know, sometimes when you, especially in this new kind of administration that we're dealing with, at a lot of these governmental levels, they're taking projects that are approved, and they're putting them in the background accounts of their new projects, such as the one that's, you know, developing nearby. And therefore, they're not requiring people to go back through the process. They're saying, you know, "You page your dues when you apply for your project, and therefore, you can continue under your current plan." So, yes, any, anything required by, by the state or local agencies to be updated will be updated.
Okay. I will bring to note that what is being asked for this evening is just a one-year extension to the project and the final plat, whichever comes first. And you say the final plat's been submitted already. Have you had a chance to look at it yet, Laura?
I was just waiting to release the comments based on whether or not the extension.
Okay.
And we have received comments from engineering.
Okay, okay.
One thing I'd like to bring up to the commission, as far as the water quality goes, the essence of the 2016 stormwater management ordinance is the quantity of flow that's leaving this development at this point in kind of the Florida development will still be leaving there after development. The essence of stormwater management is for them to keep everything that they increase over that value on their property and release it in a safe, controlled manner over time, such that it doesn't inundate anything downstream. The stormwater quality part of the ordinance will filter all the water through a media or a grass filter strip or other structures that have been looked at by Maryland Department Environment, Virginia DEP, Delaware, Pennsylvania, as well as West Virginia DEP. So there should be no concern for stormwater quality either. All of this has been going on, quite frankly, since 2000. It states surrounding us.
Mr. Zets, did you hear all that?
Yes. I wanted to say, you know, that I-
Okay, let's, let's just make it brief, because we did close the public hearing. Okay? Just make your comment.
Yeah, it's, it's quite brief. They don't have new water quality in place. The one part that they started out with, the 10 acres there, and then they're pushing it into 57 acres right now. It feeds one of my ponds, which is almost 2 acres, and it's 33 feet. And when we had that rain from Petersburg at that time, that thing filled up overnight.
Okay.
And it's going to fill up with that much water.
Our engineer says that the stormwater quality will be as good or better than when it, before that.
It can't be. You know, sometimes you get the, you know-
You know, I'm not an engineer, you're not an engineer. That's the bad part. We don't maybe understand the same-
But a lot of this stuff, you know, it's been approved back in 2006, 2007. They didn't even own the property.
Well, this company didn't own it, but someone else did.
Yeah, but what I mean is this company is taking the other company's approvals, amusement.
Well, no, I don't-
From 18 years ago.
I don't think that's the case.
Water quality, DMAs, or the DEP will allow that to happen.
Well, it's right, right here.
2006 was the original plan, the plan changed-
It's right on the thing, or there's, there's an application meeting, 2006, there's a, the room there is the middle, 2007.
Well, recently, MS4 regulations are more stringent, and, you know, it's gotten-
It'd be quite frustrating. It'd be hard in some cases with the two-year and the 10-year storms with the water quality. What we're actually seeing is it's not many of them. We literally captured it all.
Literally, no, no way of filtering that water out like that. You have to have, and he knows it as well as anybody else, you have to have, you know, biological filtration.
And that's what-
And that takes space, which they don't want to give up. And like you said, that you got a lot of green space, they left it up there, and there's nothing, it's right against the line, absolutely zero.
Mr. Zets, I don't mean to cut you off, but we did close the public hearing. Perhaps you can get together with Mr. Christian and our county engineer, and they can give you some assurances that the project is being completed in compliance with all the governing agencies.
Yeah, they never even consulted me at all on anything.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have additional questions of Mr. Christian or of the staff?
My only statement or question, I'm not sure what, how it's going to end up, but it would be that if there are changes within the subdivision laws that we currently have, which are currently being reviewed, that any change that we have between now and June 18th or 22th would, would need to be recognized.
It would depend on what the, the legal counsel for the county chose to do with all of the preliminary plans out there that are in the final plat process, and whether all of those plans out there from any subdivision going through the final plat process right now, whether they would be held to the same standard. If they were held to the same standard, unfortunately, it would block.
I certainly wouldn't be singling you out, right?
No, no.
That would just depend on what the actual final version of-
The revised-
The ordinance would say, each one we said that has come after the first says, has some scheme for whether it applies or if it applies, but if you didn't submit a major plan change, then you have to do a new version. But it'll be whatever the ordinance says.
Yeah. Mr. Gokunhour, to be clear, the, the 2006 and 2007 dates on, on your packet are incredibly misleading. You know, we're, we're not actually using that same engineering that was submitted in 2006 and 2007. When we submitted our major plan change, when the planning commission and the engineering department required us to get in compliance with the 2016 stormwater management regs, we brought the entire plan. We hired a new engineer, the old engineering firm was not even in business. We hired a new engineer and completely re-engineered the project to be in accordance with all subdivision ordinance and stormwater management. So I, I know that those dates might appear like, you know, we're, we're piggybacking off of what somebody else did, but this is in fact a totally different project.
I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Eddie, as I understand what you're asking, is that subdivision regulations, as they get revised and updated, maybe sometime within the next six or eight months, will this project then have to comply to those regulations? That's his question. It's, it's the development itself, rather than-
And again, it will be totally up to what the, what the legal counsel for the planning commission decides to do, as it pertains to everybody. They'll have to make some statement about plans in general, and what they will have to do to come into a compliance. And if it applies to us, we will have to comply.
I think those revisions are always subject to the county council's approval, and any modifications or exceptions is generally mandated by the county council whenever they adopt the new subdivision regulations or the revised subdivision regulations. Am I correct?
That's right. Our office advises and takes part in the process, but we don't ultimately decide that in the county council.
Right, yeah. It first would come to this body. We would then either approve or make recommendations for changes to the county council. The county council then has the ultimate say as to whether or not any projects that are existing have to go back to square one. I think legal counsel has told us that in some cases, they don't, so.
I don't have it in front of me, so I don't have an exact timeline, but I know there's language in there that allows a window because of the day of adopting the ordinance. We still have preliminary plans that have final plats that are underway. There is language that references that to say, "These plans are good for this amount of time if there's no activity." There's language in there, I just don't know what it is. And we certainly wouldn't have it worded that a preliminary plan that's been approved and that has ongoing activity that meets state code and has all the vesting parameters met, our language has to match that.
I think vested rights is the word we keep hearing over and over and over again. Anyhow, what we're here for this evening is to decide whether or not we want to grant an extension to the project. So that's the motion that we're looking for.
I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation and grant a one-year extension to the, for the preliminary plan or the final plat, whichever comes first.
All right, I have a motion of Mr. Gant, looking for a second?
Second.
Second to Mr. Gokunhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Zets, please get with the engineer and our engineer to discuss your concerns, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. The next item on the agenda is a request for preliminary plan approval, Mid-Atlantic I-81 Logistics Park.
Yes, so this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Mid-Atlantic I-81 Logistics Park Lot Number 3 East. The file is 2104-152. The developer is Horizon Martinsburg 324K Owner LLC, and the engineer is Dice Engineering. It's located in the Arden District, MAP 14, parcel 15, and is located on the east side of Development Drive at its intersection with Corning Way, approximately three quarters of a mile south of Business Park Drive. This project proposes a new 324,000 square foot warehouse slash light manufacturing facility, which would be Phase 1, and Phase 2 will consist of a new 369,000 square foot warehouse. which would be Phase One, and Phase Two will consist of a new 369,000-square-foot warehousing light manufacturing facility. The project will be developed on approximately 47 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. At the April 1st, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted an exception to Section 705 to not install sidewalks. On June 18th, 2021, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Mid-Atlantic?
Danny Dunlap with Dice Engineering, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. What was your last name again?
Dunlap.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Dunlap or of the staff?
There are none. I make the motion. We accept staff recommendation. Preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, I recommend advancement of preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Preliminary plan is approved and will be going to the final plat stage. Thank you.
I'm gonna be releasing myself from this project.
Okay. I'm not sure you really need to leave the room. Does he need to leave the room?
It's best generally if you're-
Okay. All right. But you gotta come back.
All right.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Southbrook, Section 1.
This is another request for preliminary plan approval. Project is Southbrook, Section 1, filed 2105-176. The developer is Chandler's Lynn LLC, and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map 3, parcel 9, and is located along Hattery Road and Shirely Road, approximately half a mile east of Winchester Avenue. This section proposes 250 residential lots, 159 are single-family detached and 91 are single-family attached, on approximately 102 acres, to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 21st, 2021, County Engineer Doug Smith stated that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project? Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Gerhardt or of the staff?
There are none. I make the motion. We accept staff recommendation. Preliminary plan meets requirements of subdivision ordinance, therefore, recommend advancement of preliminary plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenauer, to accept staff recommendation, that is to approve the preliminary plan, advance it on to-
Advance the preliminary plan.
Yeah, so going on to the final plat stage at that point? Yeah, on to the final plat stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that Mr. Smith recused himself and was not in the room for the vote. All those in favor? I think I said that. Motion passed.
The next item on the agenda is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is E. Boerlots 4A and 4B, file number 2104-156. The developer is Edgar A. Boer Jr., surveyor is Greg Yabrenetsky. Project's located in the Mill Creek Tax District, map 8, parcel 2.8, at the intersection of Goldmiller Road and Runnymede Road. The project proposes the creation of one 2.2-acre parcel and another 2.2-acre parcel. It will be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval on June 18th, 2021, stating a review of this project had been completed and was found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. Since the project is found to be complete and in compliance, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Mr. Boer on the air.
Oh, okay.
Ray couldn't come tonight.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Boer or of the staff?
There are none. I make the recommendation of, we accept staff recommendation for the approval of preliminary plat, the final plat.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenauer, and I heard a second over here by Mr. Deal. I heard you too, but he-
That's fine. Just give me one, Dave.
Just give you one?
[laughing]
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenauer, second by Mr. Deal, to accept the staff recommendation and to approve the preliminary final plat for E. Edgar E. Boer Lots. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is Ohr, Parcel A.
This is a request for preliminary final plat approval. Project is Ohr Parcel A and 11 residue, file number 2010-266. Developer is George S. Ohr and Sons, surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. Project's located in the Arden District, map 9, parcel 11, on the east side of Arden-Nalva Road, approximately 2,000 feet north of the intersection with Tinsman Lane. The project proposes the creation of one 14.5-acre parcel and another 148.1-acre residue to be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval on March 4th, 2021, stating a review of this project had been completed and was found to be in compliance. Since the project is complete and compliant with the 2009 Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Mike Roberts representing project.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or of the staff?
Just for the record, there was a waiver claimed for this project.
Okay.
A way to allow access to the lots not front lawn, linking public road, that terminal square.
You won't amend anything, sir.
Are you aware of this?
I believe so.
Okay.
For no further questions, I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation and approve the preliminary final plat.
I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Smith.
Give Mr. Smith.
Okay. Quiet down on that end.
Keeping the fan.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Smith, to approve the preliminary final plat for Ohr Parcel A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And if I could just make a request of, if you notice things like that, if you get those before the meeting, which are meant to be separate, it's sort of-
Okay, our next item on the agenda is Eaton Subdivision.
This is a request for preliminary final plat approval. Project is Eaton Subdivision, lots 1 through 3, file number 2105-189. The developer is John Eaton, and the surveyor is Ed Johnson. It's located in the Opeken District, map 19, parcel 44. It's located off of Weinbrenner Road, approximately 1 mile from its intersection with Viles Crossroad. This project proposes the creation of one 7.7-acre parcel, one 10-acre parcel, and one 17.2-acre parcel to be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval on June 28th, 2021, stating a review of this project has been completed and found to be in compliance. Since the project is complete and compliant, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
I'm Ed Johnson. I'm the surveyor of the current plat.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Johnson or of the staff?
There are no questions. I'll make a motion. We accept staff recommendation and approve the preliminary final plat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenauer, to accept staff recommendation and to approve the preliminary final plat for Eaton Subdivision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Whispering Pines Townhomes.
This is a request for final plat determination. Project is Whispering Pines Townhomes, Phase Two, lots 94 to 134, file number 2104-155, which is tied to 71-02. The developer is D.R. Acquisitions LLC, the engineer is Foxen Associates. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map 10, parcel 50, on the south side of Middleway Pike, approximately 3,000 feet west of the intersection of Middleway Pike and Free Run Road. This project proposes 41 townhome lots on 4.5 acres to be served by public water and sewer. On February 5th, 2007, the planning commission denied the request for modification of Section 902 of the Berkeley County subdivision regulations to allow 5 feet of the required 20 feet between the rear yards of townhomes on individual townhome lots. At the April 15th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the planning commission voted to approve a waiver to Article 8, Section 801, Table 8-1A, 8 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, requiring a minimum of one parking space for attached dwelling unit to be off-site. On June 17th, 2021, County Engineer Dirk Doug Smith reviewed the project and found it to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. Since the final plat meets the requirements of the ordinance, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Steve Cianovich with Foxen Associates, representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions?
There are questions. I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation and advertise for a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval on August 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenauer, I believe, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to consider final plat at a public hearing on August 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Amberfield, Section 7.
This is also a request for final plat determination. Project is Amberfield, Section 7, lots 127 to 130 and 144 to 170, file number 2105-192. The developer is Highlands of the Potomac. The engineer is Foxen Associates. It's located in Falling Waters District, map 6, parcel 2, on the west side of Kitchens Orchard Road, approximately .45 miles from the intersection of Grade Road. This project proposes 31 single-family residential lots and approximately 35 acres to be served by private septic and public water. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 28th, 2021, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of this project was completed and found to be in compliance. Since the final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
I assume you're here to speak to us.
Wait till you ask. Harvey, one hand.
You don't want to assume right now.
Steve Cianovich with Foxen Associates, representing the applicant.
Commission members, do you have questions?
There are none. I make the motion. We accept staff recommendation and advertise for the public hearing for consideration of final plat approval on August 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to consider final plat approval at a public hearing on August 2, Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Ridge Crest, Phase 3.
This is a request for final plat determination. Project is Ridge Crest, Phase 3, lots 8 through 18, file number 2012-054. The developer is J.H. Real Estate LLC, surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Arden District, map 16, parcel 6, off of Payne's Ford Road, approximately 2 miles east of the intersection with Secondary Route 19 over 1. This space proposes 11 single-family lots on approximately 19.9 acres to be served by private well and septic. At the March 5th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted an exception to Section 705 to not install sidewalks along Payne's Ford Road. At the December 17th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Appendix A, Section 1.7.8, requiring a 150-foot paved diameter cul-de-sac every 1,000 feet of roadway. County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter on June 29th, 2021, stating that a review of this project was completed and found to be in compliance. Since the final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Mike Roberts representing project.
Okay, Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts?
There are none. I make the motion. We accept staff recommendation, advertising for a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval on August 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to consider final plat approval at a public hearing on August 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mike.
Yeah, it is, isn't it? Should've been here one public hearing ago. You wouldn't have been laughing. Planning Commission staff, do you have anything? Legal counsel, do you have anything you wish to address?
I'd like to adjourn.
It's all quiet?
Second.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your cooperation during this difficult time and for your shining attendance tonight. Thank you very much. All right, I think that's hers. A motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's against me?